Eight inches of asphalt is the state standard. And I don't know what else you would, I mean, I don't know what else you can do. I don't know what else we can do. I mean, I'm speaking to the whole council when I say that we made an agreement last night that if any damages to that road during the construction of that next phase, that Web Development would handle that. So beyond that, all you guys gotta do is maintain your road. You're gonna have, you know, other people building up there.
Yes, sir. The only que- John, this is for you.
It's like any other street in Seward.
The only question I would have is... Bill had indicated that from the very beginning, which I think this all started like, what, '03? '03 or '04?
Yes, that sounds about right.
Yeah. I would just like to see something in writing about the fact that from the very beginning, you know, one, two, three, I know it's now four, but it was probably one, two, three, was originally planned and that, and that the city granted. Well, you said they didn't, but that there was some, something in writing about that all three of these developments, now four, would not have to have the thirty-two-foot concrete streets and sewer like everything else in town.
They still have to have everything like it.
What?
They still have to have everything like every- we're not granting any waivers.
But I, however it happened originally, because granted, this development is like no other in Seward. I mean, every other developer, well, you guys up by North Columbia, I mean, you had to do it by all the...
These streets are twenty-eight, twenty-eight feet wider than the streets up there.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, you, you know, you know what it is to comply with all that stuff. I'm just, just for clarification, I just wanna know, or I wanna see something in writing that from the very beginning, which I have no problem with, that this Phase Three, now Phase Four, Edition Four, was at some point designated to be just like the other ones?
I'm kinda wondering.
Mike and, Mike and, and like I said earlier, my, my only concern is, is that we start on a path like this and then where's, where's the line? Where does it stop? Where does it start? Well, if there isn't one, well, then there isn't one, you know? It's just like, so that's what I want from you.
The only real difference here is, is we're not paying for the paving.
No, I don't care about that, John.
No, no.
I wanna know, because we have standards how we build streets.
Just one second. You keep talking about these waivers now. One other thing has kinda popped up. At the initial onset, I believe Roger and Calvin wanted East Seward Street paved up to Sutton. And at that time, I said, it seems kinda silly to require them to pave that street up to Sutton's to get entrance into it, because at that time it was gonna be gravel. And so that might've been the waiver, but there's no waivers and there's been no relaxation.
Well, at, at some point, for the city to grant a development to not put in standard concrete streets with sewer and all the other utilities, something had to have been granted and I came on late...
We have sewer up there, Seward.
No, I know. I'm talking about the streets, because...
Well, we have the paved street up there. And there's nothing that says in our, our codes or regulations that it has to be concrete over asphalt.
I'm just asking you with some...
I'm just trying to figure out...
Some research, John.
I can do that.
Please.
Yeah.
Just give me some...
Meat?
Written answers, please.
Okay.
That's all I want. I'm not blaming you for anything. I just want some, something.
I'm just trying to figure out what's wrong.
Why is it so different? That's what's wrong.
It's not different.
Well, no, then show me. I don't have any problem if it's not it.
We got thirty-two-foot wide streets out here, they have thirty-two-foot wide streets there. We have sixty-foot right-of-ways out here, we got sixty-foot right-of-ways up there.
You know what? That's fine, just give me some documentation.
I can do that.
Please.
Thank you. And I will look into that ownership of that road.
Jonathan, do you live up there?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Hang on a second. Carl, then John. John, this might be more for you. On that East Seward Road, does the city responsible for that road or is there a certain spot to where the city's responsibility ends?
City's responsible for East Seward Street.
All the way around and back down to the highway?
Well, the city's responsible, the city's responsible up to the city limits, which is about county, maybe two-hundred feet north.
So the access to Goldenrod Lane, where it meets East Seward Street, is...
As it gets into Goldenrod?
That's county.
So that would be county, that's not city?
It's the top of the hill. Mr. Miller, if you go, like, from Evergreen intersection, go down the hill and then up, probably about twelve, thirteen-hundred feet east of that intersection, city limits.
That's city.
The rest is county.
Okay.
We have a agreement with the county to, we do snow removal on the whole, whole East Seward Street up to Thirty-Four. Maintenance-wise, is the county supposed to be doing it? Or they never do it? So guess what? We, the city's been maintaining a lot of that over the years.
Well, the original agreement was, we, we had an MOU with the county and that we would do the snow removal and they would, because they have a chip seal machine, every two years they would do the chip seal.
Yes. Well, I, I mean, the main, the main reason I'm asking is, I mean, based on that information, there's really one entrance into this whole development that's through city's access, because on that East Seward Road, like I said, it's county and that's not, no longer city's technical responsibility at that point for that access. You know, and that's just stems from some concerns that were raised, to me being a, a council member of that ward, of the, the condition of East Seward Road at that access point of being, in their opinion, not substantial or deteriorating rather quickly and adding twenty-five lots, fifty potential cars.
We got the machinery in there to do the whole East Seward Street from Highway Thirty-Four all the way down like we did the previous two years. And we had the county commissioner said, wait a minute, we didn't know anything about this. Highway, they didn't know about that, because we had the, we had a memorandum of understanding. And so when we brought paving in the last time to do chip seal for Michael's Construction, we started with our city limits and we stayed in our city limits and the county portion never got covered again. That's what happened.
Yeah, John, did you have, had something to say?
The biggest question, Bill, is, you know, we're allowing this and we've allowed this since day one, 'cause I can remember all of the heated discussions we had about the gravel versus asphalt versus pavement. I can remember all that. But similar like, like East, like Valley View, they're in association. But part of that association, we made them put thirty-two-foot concrete streets in, the city did. So, you know, if Valley View would ever say dissolve their association, the city has got all their ducks in a row and everything's complete. The city waters the streets. What if down the road with Ridge Run, you know, things are going to wear? Things ain't gonna be as purty as they are today and they're gonna get tired of paying these association dues. So what happens then to the city if they decide to dissolve that association? So how does that fall back onto the city at that point? Because we've allowed it to go through all these stages and we have not paved anything. So if that ever dissolves, they're gonna come back to haunt the city.
I think we have state statutes in place now that actually allow for a municipality to go back in and force a revival of the HOA to make sure that they continue the maintenance.
So we'd have to sue every household to come up with them?
No, no. It would be an action between the city and the HOA. It's, it's basically requesting that it be revived.
But if that HOA doesn't have enough money in it to pay for all of these accesses, what are we going after? If they dissolve it?
I think if it, let's say the HOA went defunct, but we had to repave it, we'd just create a paving district and it'd be assessable.
So it still would come back on the city?
No, it wouldn't come back on the city.
Well... It would be a street assessment.
But still...
Well, it's their association, it's not ours.
It will assess it back to the homeowners.
Yes.
I, I'm just, you know, that, that's just something, because we do have associations throughout the town.
And that's the reason why we wanted the sixty-foot right-of-ways in there, because if they goes defunct or whatever, we have to go back in and create a paving district and it's assessable.
That'd be only the concern. I know, and Sid's kinda heading down that avenue is later, 'cause we do have other associations, but they've all did the concrete, they've all did everything, and this is the only association in Seward that I know of that we, we did give no exemptions, and I know that for a fact. But we allowed them to continue this process the way they developed it.
Yeah, it was a vision. And it was an understanding which you, all you have control over, even now, even in the future, even when you guys are gone, the next council will have the same control that you have now. It's always been our vision, it's always been, you know, to improve the city of Seward with something that they don't have. And everybody loves it up there. Everybody thinks it's the greatest development in Seward and in any surrounding area. So I think we hit our mark in regards to that. I can understand the concerns of roads and, and the issues, but as the association grows, so does the money grow considerably. And I think that the association will find that things are easier down the road with more lots than less lots. And when you talk about assessments, to redo that into storm sewer, curb and gutter, and paving, and you assess those people up there, I think you're in for a big fight. I mean, that's just me.
But, I mean, that's what space in the city could be someday. Because we have not pushed it from day one.
But, but the number of lots they have now will be able to make that more attainable for the cash flow that they have coming in. So they're at that magic number now with Phase Four being completed. Before Phase One and Two, it was, it was very tough for them.
I remember.
And if you take a look at your budget, I think just recently, I mean, they, they brought out some expenditures to help keep the roads in place now.
But you can't say, ten years down the road, that the, the association starts losing money. And like Kelly's saying over there, well, you're getting to a point where it's going to start looking like the city's gonna have to take it over, and yes, we start going in there and doing the paving district and we start assessing that money back, it is a burden.
Well...
Either way, it's a burden.
There's always gonna be that possibility on any type of development that you have that they could go under.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, because, you know, even some of the roads up there now, you know, then the, the, the cost even of, of maintaining your roads up there, you know, you can go up there right now and the cracks, you know, are there and there's costs there, unexpected costs.
Well, that's where the, that's what the association dues were put forth, for to manage and maintain that road and nothing else, 'cause all other districts were created. And that was from the get-go. So obviously that money needs to keep generating so that that can be done. But it's not like this has to be done every single year, I mean, you know, and these phases are in several years apart. So, you know, Phase One has some issues right now, mostly on the downhill side, because it is a downhill side. It's no different on an asphalt or a concrete road on a downhill side where you have more problems with those types of paintings or rock, because it's on a downhill side. That's just the way it is. So I'm just saying that as it gets bigger, it's not a bigger cost, you know, because you can do it in phases. And if you were, you know, and, and I've had those conversations with the association. We had, Eric and I, we had a meeting with them last night and we visited with them about it. And I think the biggest concern that they had was the fact that they were struggling a little bit for the first amount and, and that's, that's duly noted by Web Development, believe me. You know, two thousand seven, eight, nine, and part of ten, we had no economy. And so it was a little difficult. And I think everybody felt it. But I think those twenty-five lots are gonna fill up quick. I know they're gonna fill up quick. I don't think it, I know it. I mean, we have considerable amount of people interested now. So the association's just gonna get stronger and stronger as those lots sell and go forth. They're gonna have more money to do the things that they need to do.
Yeah, John?
Can I just make this straight? From your discussions with them last night, it is our intention, I, I'm speaking on behalf of Ray Trump, for us to govern the fourth development, the fourth edition of this. It is also noted that we are basically, when it's finished, it's ours, so to speak. Is that correct? That it was...
That's all part of the covenants. When you buy your lot, it's, it's definitely it's in there that you are part of the homeowners' association and you assume those responsibilities.
Correct. Okay. And that can, that is also consistent with the board?
Right. Yeah, it's, that hasn't gonna, we're not gonna change the wording at all.
Okay.
So yeah, if, if you were getting at, is that money then going forth to the association? Absolutely. Unless you're gonna have new blood up there. I think you're gonna need some.
You're gonna have to sit up there.
You're gonna have new blood up there, so, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know where else I can go with this other than, you know, we're doing nothing different than the original plan, except for we did make a little bit of a revision to this street, but other than that, this has been in, in place since day one. So I, I guess Web is just asking to finalize this development and get more money to the association, 'cause that's exactly what's gonna happen.
This is a public hearing, so I do wanna take a second to ask if anyone in the public wishes, wishes to make a comment on this item, number eleven. Seeing no one other than close, the public comment portion of the public hearing, Sid just...
Just a comment and a possible motion. I guess tonight, I would lean toward tabling this with the contingency that at least I would like to see something in writing from Web to the existing association as far as commitments to the, the possible damage and repairs to the street and what Web would commit to. I also personally would like to see John from you, the stuff in writing, 'cause I just can't believe that this development was allowed to happen without something in writing. I just don't see it. I'm, I'm just not comfortable at this point with just giving the, the carte blanche and then, you know, I would also, John, from you, from a public safety standpoint, like to see some official document that talks about how many exits you have to have per houses in a neighborhood. You know, I live on a street of ten houses, I have three ways out. If I run through my backyard, I have four. It's just a little bit of a public safety concern and also East Seward Street, the fact that it's not paved yet. So I guess basically based upon those concerns I have, I'm not gonna re, I don't know if the motion is to reject it or just table it? What would it be?
See, can I make another comment? We're here, so there. Wait, wait, wait.
Hang on a second here. We don't have any motions yet. John, do you wanna add something?
Let me explain a little bit about the difference between preliminary plat. Preliminary plat is basically just a blueprint to the council. And you look at the blueprint for the council and you go, okay, this is all fine and dandy, but what I really would like to see is this, this, and this. Some documentation.
That's my motion.
Boom, boom, boom. And then it goes down and all that stuff is presented, because the preliminary plat, basically all it is is a grading.
Yeah, perfect.
And, and so we'll just put all this stuff together and bring it back with the...
You heard why I wanted, that's my motion.
Now, and...
John, hang on one second. So we have a motion, correct? No. The motion, I wanna make sure I understand this though.
I'll read it again.
The motion is to approve the preliminary plat and everything else he said is standard. So it's not specified in the motion, but the motion would be to approve the preliminary plat. Is that your motion?
With the stipulation...
With stipulation.
That all that information I requested from not only Bill, which would be a, a written commitment and agreement to the current homeowners' association.
Can I ask a question, do I have...
Hang on one second.
For, 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 for some, whatever compensation would be allowed and compensated for whatever damage would happen to the roads. And then also to John, is not only the original exemptions, you claim there were none?
No.
Whatever they were called, I, I would just, there's gonna be minutes, you know, that have that. That's just what I wanna see.
Yep.
And then also, what governs the access to a, a neighborhood of twenty-five dwellings, officially?
Hang on one second. We have a motion, you get a second to comment here. Is there a second? If there's no second, then it fails, the motion fails for a second. So there is no, no motion on table. Bill, did you wanna say something?
Aren't I not on record currently with what I've said here tonight to the city council, to the newspaper, in the minutes, rather than tabling this and delaying this another month, which is very difficult for Web Development, because it puts us into a very major weather situation? I am on record tonight, I, Jonathan is sitting here, we've also had the conversation with the association. It is gonna be in the minutes that Web Development will take care of any damage to the road through the construction of the fourth phase. And I'm on record saying it. I don't see the difference in that in the minutes here at the city council than us writing a letter and being tabled for another month. I don't think you said ask him to be tabled.
Well, hang on. I was, I was actually had a motion to approve the plat.
Okay, okay. I thought you said table.
My motion was to approve the preliminary plat. It wasn't to table it.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said table.
So that, so that motion fails, there are no motions currently on the table. So is there any other questions or comments on this item? Yes.
Any clarification, please? And please make it simple to understand.
Who are you asking this of?
This, John. Preliminary versus final plat.
Yes, sir.
Once a preliminary plat is approved, what can take place prior to a final plat? And obviously the council, if the final plat comes before the, the council, the council can deny it finally, yes?
Yes.
So what, what happens between preliminary and final?
A preliminary plat, really, like I said, is just a plan to you to make notations on what, it, either you like it or you would like it with these changes made. That's why there's no ordinance or no resolution attached to the preliminary plat, it's just an approval.
It's a draft.
It's just a draft.
Thank for comment. And Bill, what are you gonna be doing between now and the final coming to us?
We are, we're in the bid process from that point forward. Currently what we're waiting on is an approval of the preliminary plat so that we can move forward with the bid process and, and pinning down our subs. You know, we have a grading sub that gets very busy during the, obviously the only season they can grade in. We also have the same situation with utilities and we also have the same situation with pavers. It's very difficult to get all of those people on the same page. So what our concern is, is the, you know, moving forward with this so that we can, we want it in a timely manner and not lose things. It is feasible that if we lose subs due to delays, that it wouldn't even happen this year, 'cause we won't push this into the winter. That's not a money...
Thanks, Bill.
Now, in answer to your question, until the final plat is approved, they can dig all they want to, because it's their land. You can't sell lots, you can't mark off lots.
So what's the timing between approval of preliminary and final?
Uh, it'll be on, you'll see at the twenty-first of March.
So the next meeting would be the final?
No, it wouldn't be the next meeting.
Oh, March, I'm sorry, Sid's not...
It has to go in front of Plan Commissioner.
Give you time to do your research before the final shows up?
I hope so, 'cause he's my research guy.
Yep.
Move to approve the preliminary plat.
Sorry.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary through the second, we're ready for a discussion. Sign down to dress your votes. We display the votes.
In favor, Logan, Camper, Miller, Singel, Schmidt, Hanson.
Thank you. Next item, we have a public hearing for the one and six-year street improvement plan. I believe Julie is here to present. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Start at seven o'clock sharp, does that be promising?
I had a feeling it wouldn't be right at seven o'clock when you...
When they all say seven o'clock, that's...
I've been here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the presentation is up on the boards for the, for everyone to review. I believe Bonnie also sent it to you in your packets. This is a one and six-year plan, something we have to do every year. This one, let's move it forward. There we go. Just kind of a quick reminder, I know we do have some newer council members, but one and six-year plan is part of the paperwork requirements for your highway allocation funding that you get and, or, I guess it's deposited monthly, but annual allocations from the state. This document is now filed online. It used to be we had to mail all this paperwork in, now we can file it online and Mel does that for you. Really what we're showing is projects that we've completed or removed from the program for some reasons, and we'll talk about one of those this year. Show projects with expenditures planned for this year, that is what is in the one-year plan, and show projects that we're planning to be completed over the next six years, obviously including the current year and then the following five years. Projects can be on the one-year plan more than one year, and we have a number of those for, those of you who've been on the council for a number of years, you see some of the same ones. And that allows, since we are expending money on engineering and such, that is why some projects are on there more than one year, and we do get some on within a year as well. And this is intended to be a planning tool for communities so you can budget to complete street, street improvement projects. In this last calendar year, year for 2016, no projects were constructed. However, we did, as I've noted, remove one project from the plan, which was Twin Oaks Road, because based on some research, we found out it's a private road and it's not the city's responsibility to rebuild it for those property owners, so...
Quite similar to regrind.
Our one-year projects that we've got are Carol K. Boulevard, that is a federal aid project where we're getting funding from the state. Obviously recently had a public meeting on that as well. It is about a three-point, point-three-mile road. It would be Concrete Curb and Gutter Street. We would be extending from the End by Bader to Philcrest Drive. We also have Waverly Road. This would be from Highway Fifteen to the Plum Creek Bridge, which that bridge has now been reconstructed by the county, correct?
It's not been reconstructed.
They have plans?
It's not going to be reconstructed. It's gonna be, it's been looked at and inspected and it's a good bridge.
Oh, it's good to go. Okay.
It's there to go.
That's, that's a change. But we are, the city is coordinating with the county as the county extends and does improvements to that road as well within the county jurisdiction. The current plans for funding of this project would be to use the federal aid repurchase program funds. If you want more information on that fund program, we can talk about it after the meeting. I'm not gonna bore everybody. It would be about one point one miles. We're estimating about one and a half million dollars to pave this, three lanes wide along there. And it is currently being coordinated with the trail projects that's going along in there that Shimmer is designing, and Shimmer is also working on that for the engineering. Looking at construction in nineteen or twenty and, and coordinating that with the county to help get the best bang for your buck with the larger project, maybe it ties a lot more contractors into it. As just noted, the Seward Hike Bike Trail again is on the one and six-year plan. Typically, we don't show sidewalk and trail projects on the one and six-year plan. This one is shown due to the fact that it does have federal aid and it is a significant expenditure of the, the city and its partners in, in this project. You know, right now, we're looking at two point eight million for construction costs, around a total of four million in total project costs, so that would include property owner's rights or property rights that need to be acquired with the project as well. The city share for this project is around eight hundred thousand. And obviously, I cannot type, because it's estimated to be in two hundred and one. I believe it's, um...
Eighteen.
Yeah. Estimated to be bid in 2018 with construction the following calendar year. I'm surprised Mel didn't catch that when I said it on the slide.
Well, it's right on, it's right on line right here.
Well, I don't wanna do, you know... 'Cause he's my proofreader. Here is the map for the trail, just to, and this is what we've got recently from Shimmer, so it is the most current proposed route. And they are still working on environmental documents, in case you were wondering. The last one-year project would be Seward Street, also discussed here at this meeting. We are looking to do concrete paving and you can kinda see it in that blue box in the, on the aerial map. Um, we are looking to do concrete paving and you can kinda see it in that blue box in the, on the aerial map. Going from where the paving currently ends to the driveway on the trailhead parking lot. This project is being chunked up a little bit so that city forces can construct it. I mean, looking at budgets, we felt that was the best way to start getting this project moving forward. And over the next three to four years, um, paving Stewart Str- East Seward Street out to City Limits. Looking at about fifty thousand dollar construction cost for city forces to build that this year. So now we're getting into our six-year project. So this would be, um, looking from twenty, late twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen timeframe out to twenty twenty-two. I would be, if I'm doing math right. So, um, we've got a number of projects here. Jackson Road from fifth to eight. Um, East Hillcrest, this would be East Ridge Drive to the bridge. Again, that one would need to be coordinated with the county to determine what they're going to do with that bridge. What any grade changes need to be done to that bridge for floodplain purposes. And then, um, they're paving out also to, um, Matski Highway. East Hillcrest Drive going the other way from East Ridge back to Highway fifteen. That would be a street resurfacing project, so not a full reconstruction. Um, an overlay to preserve what's there. Um, Seward, then here's the next three Seward Streets, uh, as far as from Trailhead to Ridge Run, Ridge Run to Evergreen, then Evergreen to City Limits. Again, all three of those to be constructed by city forces. Lot, those would likely, those may likely jump some of those other projects into the one-year plan, um, before the others. Now, we've got a, a group of streets, um, in the southern part of the city. We're pining three different segments on Pine as well as Spruce Street. To get some of that area, um, improved with paving. As well as looking at improvement to Columbia from Lincoln Avenue to Highway thirty-four. Again, that would be a street resurfacing project. Walnut Street for Progressive out to Pine, so back into that, that Pine and Walnut neighborhood. And then Park Street is another project that we're looking at potentially in the future to be constructed by city forces. That is currently a one-lane roadway, and that's all that they're aiming for. So that would be something that when we look at getting that paved, um, we would have to look at standards and, um, definitely discuss that with council on how we're gonna move forward there with the drainage way adjacent to it. And then the last project, I believe, was East Ridge Drive, um, from Bradford to Roberts. This would be a gap paving district, um, created to pave that. Cause that, is that one of the last gravels? Cause I guess Park Street has gravel as well. So as we always do, um, we've updated some mapping so that all of this can be put on the city website. And this, I understand, is very hard to read, um, but it will be placed on the city website. And this map shows both the city projects on the one and six-year plan as well as county projects within kind of the two-mile area. Now, we don't show the full two miles out, cause then you really couldn't read anything. But those that come into the Seward or, or into Seward are identified, um, just to help everybody kinda see what's going on in the area. So this presentation, as well as the one and six-year plan and the maps we've prepared, will be available on the city's website for the public to view coming into the future. Any questions for me as I ran through that very quickly?
Thank you. Does the council have any questions or comments regarding Julie? If not this time, is this a public hearing? So I will open it up to public comment. Does anyone, anyone from the public wish to comment on item number twelve? Not seeing anyone. I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Okay. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there anything you, if you accept it?
Yeah, you need to pass a resolution.
Yeah, resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll reduce it.
All right. We'll go to twelve A. All right.
There's, there's always strings. You should've.
I know. I should've kept reading. I stopped. So John introduces the resolution. Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero two. Would you like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Sorry.
You have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please play the votes. Thank you. Good catch. Um, item thirteen.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much. Item thirteen is also a public hearing. This is consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter nine, Articles one through fourteen of the Building Regulation of the Municipal Code relating to standard codes and regulation of building structures, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and related work in adopting the International Building, Residential, Plumbing, Mechanical, Fuel, Gas, Property Maintenance and Energy Conservation Code, twenty twelve additions. And John, did you wanna take this?
Yes. Um, I believe I gave you a little report on everything that, that kinda went down. Uh, it just felt that we do what we do in a day on Chapter one, clean up, do some housekeeping. Pretty much self-explanatory. The fee increase, we've increased our fees in two thousand and seven. Typically, what we do is we use the, uh, the building guide from the International Code Council. If you look on, um, let me see it. Um, the Code Council actually puts together, um, because there's only one code now in the United States, the, is the ICC Codes, um, for government building. They put together a bi-monthly publication. And in the bi-monthly publication, they list all different types of construction types. And the construction type, if you look at the fee increase, um, what they do, what they used to do is they used to have what was called good, better, and best. And good was a wood frame house. Better was a wood frame house with some brick. And best was just, it was like the three little pigs, basically. One was strong, one was this, one was that. There was some difficulty with promulgating that on a consistent basis, so they dropped it down to one category. And we're taking that category as a base for our fees. They do have a best and better out there, but it's, it's square footage. And we don't build houses that are over five thousand square feet. So basically, what we do is, is we just adopted those, those base fee schedules. And then we take that fee schedule to determine the valuation of the house and then we match it up with here for the cost of the permit. I believe in your, in your package, you also seen a, uh, copy of a survey report. We contacted about twenty, twenty different jurisdictions. Uh, and if you look at the, at the deal, we're just kinda at the bottom of the middle of the road. There are some towns like Papillion, Bellevue, Vista. They're typically about two thousand to three thousand dollars higher than what we are for, for permits. But I kinda took everything that happened in our area of towns by our size and we're right in the middle of the road. You know, basically, if we pass all these permit fees, it'll put about twenty thousand dollars more per year based on thirty houses, thirty new construction houses. And it brings us back up to the normal, but everybody else is charging in the state. So that's the fee increase. Um, does anybody have any questions on the changes that were made to the codes and the code adoptions?
Yes, Chris.
I guess John just indirm, there's a lot to read there, and I'm not a contractor by any means, so I don't know what all the changes. Uh, how they apply and how they affect construction within the city of Seward. And I, my only question or concern would be, are all these changes, uh, I don't wanna say doable, but are, are, are they fair to the type of homes being built in Seward? Yeah, as, as we look at all, all these changes that are in there. And I have to, I'm gonna read one, just cause it's one thing that I do understand. Uh, and, and understand with an aspect, understand to a certain extent. Where we're talking about framing walls and combined R values. I don't know how combined R value is created. I mean, do, are all these things legit? What's the, what's, what's gonna be the additional cost to a contractor to meet any new changes we put into code versus the actual benefit from what it provides to?
Well, the cost to the contractor, basically, what we did is we took exception to things that, that, uh, and it wasn't just what I thought about. Uh, it happened to belong to the Building Inspectors Association. And, and the closest metropolitan that we have is Lincoln. And that's our, really, our, our, our demographics and our sounding board. Uh, the city of Lincoln, the energy code requires people to do all kinds of stuff to prove that this house is energy efficient. And in the Building Inspectors Group, what we, we do is we get together, by every two months, we go out to a different jurisdiction. We go out, we visit the houses, we look at the construction, and we talk to the people of that jurisdiction on how they're being compliant or, or non-compliant. And as the building code, they, they, it's kinda like legislate, excuse me, remember. It's kinda like legislation. They feel like they have to do something. And, and one of the things that's in the two thousand code is residential sprinklers. I don't have a problem with residential sprinklers. I live out in the country. The soonest anybody can get out to my house is twenty minutes, and I'm cooked by that time. But on the other hand, even though the code says it has to have residential sprinklers, it allows the homeowner to put the residential sprinklers in. It's quite a complicated process to put together the sprinkler system. And there's different arrays of sprinklers to be used in different places and different kinds of backups, um, and different kinds of spray arrays and the amounts of pressure, pressure that can be put out of any one nozzle. Puts about two or three thousand dollars to the cost of the house if the homeowner does. It's about five grand if, if you have somebody do it. We took exception to that. The state in Nebraska took exception to that as well. So we just followed suit with the way the state, uh, adopted the ICC Codes as well.
My, my, my concern is only not being a contractor, not, I mean, a lot of this stuff, I, I can read and see changes are in place and that they're legit changes. And we're not going to, uh, put unnecessary burdens on people to.
Well, that wasn't the intent.
I, I know it's not the intent, but I mean, it's a.
In fact, it kinda went the other way around.
It's some of the issues we run into when people wanna look at re- buying buildings downtown. What's gonna, what they're gonna have to now need to make that legit building business.
Changes as far as that goes. The only things that, that changed, one of the other things in the building that the, uh, energy code requires is what they call a boiler door test. And after you build a house, you seal off all the windows and everything. Remove the front door, put another door in there. And you close so many PSI of air in there and you have, uh, filtration, make sure whether or not the house is tight. And then going through several boiler door tests, both in Lincoln, Papillion, Omaha, and Blair, they haven't had any failures. And this boiler door test is about a three or four thousand dollar test. And we don't have anybody in this area that does them. And, and when everybody went through our house, they, through our jurisdiction, looking at our carpentry, everybody goes, why, you guys have a really good job here. So I felt it was kind of an undue situation. And the other side of it is, once you meet that boiler door test, it means your house is absolutely tight. That means you have to add an air handling system to give you three separate air changes per hour. Now, to me, that's an undue burden onto the homeowner and to the contractor and whatever. We haven't had any instances. We are energy efficient in every other way. We meet the res checks. We do everything along the line. I just do not see the value of the boiler door test, other than it's just another step for the homeowner to shell out money. And that's the way I approach the whole code system. There's no real surprises here. Um.
Hey, John, to kinda dovetail off of Chris's point, did you, could you top, especially with, on the fees side of it? I mean, changing the, to be, to be, basically adopting what the state's already adopted when it comes to the codes, I mean, that's.
That's a no-brainer.
Well, I don't almost go that far. The council can do whatever it wants. But I would say that as far as having concerns of that, if that's what the state's adopted, then to be in line with that is one thing. On the fee side of that, um, had you, did you consult with any of the local, I guess, contractors to, to get input as to, um, thoughts they may have had on, on the fees and whether some should be increased or by how much? To see where their issues are, if they have any.
I'll tell you pretty much where I stemmed, stemmed from, is after two or three years, everybody going, God, it's so cheap to build here in Seward compared to other places. And then, and then that's when I started doing my survey work. And what I did is I brought this up to the bottom of the average. We're not excessive at all.
But so you haven't, you didn't have any specific conversations?
Well, if I, if I had this conversation with Al, he'd go, jeez, I think your building permits are too high. But I still wanna put a five thousand dollar jacuzzi tub in there with an eight hundred dollar nozzle on it.
Okay. I don't know what that means. Go ahead.
You don't owe an eight hundred dollar.
He just doesn't wanna pay fees. Neither.
You kind of asked part of my question. I guess, John, where I was coming from is I, I agree with you, you know, not wanting to go along with stupid parts of the code or whatever that are excessive or whatever.
I'm not saying they're stupid. They just, I don't think they're applicable here.
Applic- applicable, be better, uh, term. But my question relating to what Josh asked is, okay, so even if we do adopt some of these new things, in reality, is it gonna cost you or Ed more time? Do we have to hire another person? I mean, like, are you gonna be working overtime? Basically, for you to, like, make sure they're doing this, is it in reality gonna cost us more money, the city?
I'll, I'll give you an example. Uh, example, when I first came here, we used to charge for roof imperments. And I told Roger, I says, we don't go up on roofs, cause they won't allow me to go up on the roof. So it's really, all we're doing is just asking for money with no inspections. So we stopped doing roofing inspections. Then the code came out and said you can only have one layer of shingeflakes, which means you have to strip it every time. So now, only now, now we have some meat and potatoes, because either Ed or myself has to go out there and make sure the roof is stripped and ready to go at the ice games. There's no help for us. It costs us more, costs more. Uh, and that was one of the things I pointed out in this, this first little deal. Um, I, I kinda like to keep our department, you know, sixty, seventy percent paid for by permit fees. And in that way, I believe it's, it's totally equitable to everybody that's in the town. Because the only people that are really paying the permit fees are the ones that are actually using the services of the inspection department. You won't be paying them because you're not doing a permit. So it's, it just seems to be an equitable way. Um, and that's the way I adjusted the fees. At some point in time, it might've been a one or a two inspection job, it becomes a three or a four inspection job. It's time to, to bring up the fee schedule. Because we're, we, when I got here, we were building about sixteen houses a year on a good year. We're doing about forty now. So there's a lot more inspections. It used to be five inspections. We probably end up doing about six or seven now, because all the extra they used to expect. And I, and I feel it's justified. I think, uh, in the grand scheme of things, I think you're probably only seeing about not even a one percent increase on a total permit fee for a fifteen hundred dollars per four houses. Maybe two or three percent, but not, it's not extraordinary. And it probably doesn't amount to much more than about two thousand dollars per house. On a hundred and eighty thousand dollar house, I'm not sure that's a lot of money.
So it, it won't translate into you and?
We have to do the work, whether we get paid for the.
Yeah, you, you guys have to do the work no matter what. It's not gonna really add to your burden um, of having overtime or incurring any extra costs.
Both have none, both on salary.
Right, right.
But it does cost the city, you can't, you can't say gas. It costs us electricity.
Well, that's, that's just where I was trying to kinda justify the increase of fees to pay for what.
There's, there's a lot more, lot more to be done for us right now. And that was one of the reasons why we asked for the permit technician. Because we're not in the office to be, it used to be that I would stay here over my lunch hour so I could greet people. Anybody that, that wanted my permit over the lunch hour, because they're working the rest of the time. Um, now, a lot of times, I'm doing inspections over the lunch hour, uh, trying to catch up. Only have a person, can't really call her a permanent technician, but she's the phone person to answer the phone for the rec department and my department and the extreme department as well. So yeah, there's an additional offense to the department.
Any other questions for John? This is a public hearing. So I ask if we're in a public, we should, uh, make a public comment on item number thirteen. Seeing out for the public, wishing to make a comment. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any additional questions or comments?
Introduce the ordinance.
The ordinance has been introduced. An ordinance to amend Chapter nine, Articles one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of the Seward, of the City of Seward Municipal Code related to standard codes and regulation of building structures, mechanical plumbing, electrical, and related work, materials, and requirements. To repeal Articles one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen as previously enacted to provide for severability. to provide for severability and to provide for the effective date. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero five and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dis, to disband this statutory rule. Second. Give a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. This is ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero five. We would like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read. Your motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, the ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero five, we finally passed and adopted. Please register your vote. Please play the votes. I believe this is the last ordinance for this evening. So only one final motion to make all the ordinances a part of the permanent record. Second. Give a motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number fourteen, consideration of approval of community development block grant agreement with Nebraska Department of Economic Development for Phase One planning, downtown revitalization grant authorization for mayor, for mayor to execute contract documents. Welcome, Ryan.
Evening, Mr. Mayor members of the council. Brian Harkins, Southeast Nebraska Development District. This is the grant agreement between the city and the state for the award letter that you received for the downtown revitalization grant. So this essentially is the contract between you and the state to execute the program. Do you want to go any farther or do you have questions? I can stop and answer real quick.
Let's just first see if we have any questions or comments from the council and we can go from there. Does the council have any questions or comments on this item? Are we good or do you would like him to continue?
We're free.
Okay. So this is a consideration of approval of the CDBG agreement with the Department of Economic Development for Phase One. Is there a motion?
No move.
Sorry.
We have a motion for approval, which is seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Yep, fifteen. Consideration of approval of documents related to community development block grant Phase One planning, downtown revitalization and authorization for mayor to execute all documents. Ryan.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council. Items fifteen A and B are related to what we call the release of funds. These are documents that are just submitted to the state for review so that once they sign off on everything, you can actually start expending document, money for any document preparation and planning activities relating to consulting. A is just updated procurement procedures. You had a set of these previously with some of the housing grant programs that you've done. Enough items have changed in that we just put a fresh set, updated, and signed and approved by the city. Item B is a resolution saying that we will, you will not use excessive force in dealing with people in any way, shape, or form relating to the administration of this grant. These are very typical documents for every CDBG grant that the state administers. The other documents that go along with this are just things that the mayor signs saying, here's the contact information, here's who our Fair Housing representative is, here's who the LEP representative is, some of the documents you approved when you did the grant application last spring. These are just the remainder of those items that go along with it.
So for item A, we'd have, we would need a motion?
You are.
No move.
Give a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. And B is a consideration, consideration of a resolution adopting the policy for using excessive force and authorization of the mayor to sign all related documents. Would someone like to introduce that resolution? Resolution has been introduced and it's designated as resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero three. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? Is there a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Please register your votes. Please display the votes. No, thank you.
All right. People just wanna send everything unless they're signing.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, thank you. Item sixty, consideration of awarding bid for thirty-four point five KV underground line replacement to Commonwealth Electric. Garrett, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you said, this is our recommendation for award of the contract for the subtransmission circuit. This is the one that runs from Second Street Substation to Water Tower Substation. It's part of the city's subtransmission loop so it can serve either from Second to Water Tower and beyond or depending on how the city switches the system to be configured to serve the other direction, from Water Tower down to Second and beyond. We received four bids for the project, two of them below our estimate and two of them above. One of them was substantially below. The bid requirements, the bid documents include some requirements for qualifications and experience, some very explicit number of years doing this kinda work, et cetera, some a little more general. And also a requirement that the bid be complete, not have additional provisions that will add to the cost beyond what's in the bid is a lump sum. The low bidder had issues on both of those fronts. We therefore do not recommend award to them. Commonwealth Electric also was twenty percent below our estimate. And checking out their references and experience qualifications, they did pass muster. And so we are recommending award of this contract to Commonwealth Electric for the bid amount two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments for Garrett? Otherwise, entertain a motion to award the bid.
No move.
Give a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.